Twenty twenty-two, roll call, Mr. Beeter.
Layla?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Chelka?
Here.
White?
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions for the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to comply all the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Public comments, anybody from the public? Morning, sir. Name an address, please.
Um, my name is James B. Robison. I live at fifteen fifty-five New Street in Waterloo, Iowa, and the reason for my, um, coming here today is, um, I like to address a situation in which I went over to the Black Hawk County Sheriff's Office to file, um, fraud charges against a code enforcement officer for illegally taking vehicles from my property. I provided them with information, which I've got even right here, videos, showed to a couple of you, and, um, they're coming to the conclusion after just speaking with one person, the code enforcement officer, that it's not fraud, and the story changes as it goes. Now, um, I'd like to possibly, I see you need to get this stuff either on the agenda to talk about because it's pretty lengthy and involved, and, um, it's fraud. You know, and I think you have a policy that, um, and I'm sure you do, I think I read an ordinance, that you have to give equal services to all citizens, and equal in this case would be the benefit of a thorough investigation. And you don't take one person's word when you have several people on the videos that you could interview. You had city employees, you had three police officers, you had the code enforcement officer capturing what they'd done, you had neighbors, you had myself, and as I said to, you know, you, Mr. White, and I said to the, um, deputy, I said, there's what I say, there's what they say, there's what the video shows, and fraud is fraud. They even tried to say my garden tractors was junk, and as I showed it to you, and I've got it on the phone, you know, I live on a hundred feet across by six hundred and sixty feet deep. It takes me a leisurely walk, ten minutes, to walk from the street to the back lot of my property. It takes me five hours, on a good day, to cut my yard. And I got a video of the garden tractor running and cutting grass, it's this tall, and he said it was junk. And then, you know, just, uh, to, if I could just briefly just read you the Black Hawk County Sheriff's Department's response to my complaint, it says, um, here's the gist of it, it says, um, "James said that he was being harassed by the City of Waterloo and the Code Enforcement Unit. James said that he was cited for parking on his grass, and the city had removed property, including three pickup trucks, and he believed fraud was involved. James showed me a video of an interaction with a Waterloo police officer, and in the video, one of James's truck, the brown and white one, can be seen parked on the east side of his home. James showed me another video of the day the trucks were removed by the City of Waterloo, and the same truck can be seen on the west side his home. A WPD officer can be heard in the video confirming that the truck has been moved recently. James explained to me that all his trucks run, but he only has one battery for his vehicles, and he switches it from vehicle to vehicle as he needs him. James believes the officers in the city committed fraud because the truck had moved location, and it was known by the officers." Even went on to say that I went to court. These people took me to court behind my back, without my knowledge. Went to court, you know, as far as going back into court and appeal, no, I did not. I went back to court to tell them in the order hour, you did not cite, I mean, I haven't received any notice of this. They cited, um, the judge cited with the city. Now, it's known that code enforcement revenue and fines from revenue support the judicial system. I, you know, in the past have, you know, been, it's been determined four or five times, I can't get a fair trial in Black Hawk County, and it was determined by court of law, and as a result, you had to appoint or bring in an outside prosecutor and an outside judge. And as I showed it to them, you know, I've had problems ever since I started complaining about another property that the city took, in which I blew the whistle back in two thousand and six, when Denisha Hill was murdered. And nobody in law enforcement in this area told how law enforcement in this area collectively violated the terms of receiving federal funding under those, um, law enforcement, um, um, grants. And I've got proof, showed it to, I showed you that, showed it to the deputy. So I am that whistleblower, and it resulted in not only the City of Waterloo losing law enforcement funds, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, Mr. Failey in Washington, who is the division chief, or at the time was the division chief of the U.S. Department of Justice, Justice Department of Justice Assistance, took one point eight million dollars from the entire state. So that means not one law enforcement officer, yeah.
James, your time is up.
Yes. Okay, so can we get this on the agenda? Because like, the main gist of this, you know, the sheriff, last time I was here, he said he would speak to me. Now I called back, and he said, he's going along with what the deputies say. Now, the sheriff isn't elected officials, but his deputies, they aren't. They're required to go by this policy. Now, I want an equal and thorough investigation, just like they would do with any other situation, and I've got cases to show that they have given other people thorough investigations. So can we get this on the agenda and talk? Later in the future, of course.
I was gonna say, it seems like it's gonna take some time for us, even to have it kind of be brought up to date.
We can look at it all, but like I said, I ain't got no reason to lie about that, nothing. I'm an open book.
Thank you, James.
I believe in total transparency.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate your time. Anyone else? Hearing none, moving on to?
Pastor wants to speak.
Oh, pastor, right, okay. Sorry about that, sir.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Larry Stummy. I live at one oh oh eight Lois Lane, here in Waterloo, and I'm a pastor of a little church, Saint Paul Lutheran Church in Cedar Falls. And I'm here not to complain, I'm here not to, uh, downgrade anybody, but I'm here to ask for help. People of faith and leaders of faith, um, propose and always say that we're interested in the poor. That's one of the things, we're primarily interested in the poor. And, uh, sometimes we show it, and sometimes we don't show it, by the way we, we live. But when I, the reason I'm coming to you today, because I believe you are interested in the poor, seems to me, one of the basic purposes and goals of, of, uh, of government should be to, to care for the poor, to care for the weak. And when you do that, you're lifting up the whole of society, if you care for the weak. That's why I'm here today, because on October twelfth, while I was reading some of my newspapers, I ran across this article, uh, put out by the Iowa Hunger Coalition that was shocking to me, because it was talking about, about the poor. Was talking about the most basic benefits that the poor have, and that's getting money to them personally. This was not, there's a, talking about the program called SNAP, or, or, um, are your, uh, your grocery, helping buy groceries and necessities for the poor, for those children who are, are poor, and for the handicapped. And this is a basic program that, that you're all involved in, and I know that you're involved in it because you're deeply involved in the food banks and for that, and, uh, and really, everything you do, the streets and the police, and everything is to protect the weakest among us, and that's why it bothered me when I heard that, uh, the poor have lost out so far through, from April to August, have lost out approximately a hundred and forty-one million dollars of benefits. In April, uh, uh, the government in, in Des Moines, uh, pulled out of this special SNAP program that was granting approximately two hundred dollars a month to, to poor individuals, and in, in Iowa, there are about two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, two hundred and eighty-five thousand poor people, and, uh, who are receiving these, these benefits. And, uh, that was pulled out in, in April, and because of that, um, it benefits that two hundred dollars a month, for instance, I think the article that I'd left with each of you describes the, of a one lady that was getting over two hundred dollars a month, and that after this program was canceled, uh, the federal program was canceled, and she was getting, um, just a little over two dollars a month. And this is money for the, for the direct people. So I was really concerned about this, because it also affects not only the poor people, but it affects all of us. Um, the chart that was, goes along with this study by the Hunger Coalition, shows the effects on every county in the state of Iowa. Uh, and the, the effects are, are that these poor people, this is money that they get directly and they spend directly, and it helps the groceries, it helps the workers, it helps the farmers, because they're buying their products. Since, from April to August, in, in Black Hawk County, there was a loss of eleven million, five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars because of the cutting off of this program. And so it's a serious program, not only for the, for the poor, but for all of us and for the economy. And I'm, I'm here to ask your help, uh, as leaders of this community, I know you're all concerned about, about the people of this community. It shows by your mission statement, it shows by your action today, it shows by, by everything you do, is, is to help people, to make this a better place. And what I'm asking is, this is a basic program, this SNAP program, it's not a program that's paying for social workers or for, for services, but it's paying for directly money to the poor. Two hundred dollars to a lot of us, uh, who are, are more middle class, uh, we can get by if we lost two hundred dollars, but the poor, it's, it's an extremely important thing, and especially in this time of, of inflation. So what I'm asking you is your help, uh, to, working together with your other supervisors throughout the state, uh, because every county has, has felt the brunt of this. The largest, I think, is Polk County, I think is over thirty, three hundred and thirty-nine million dollars, but you're the fifth largest, I think, what, um, I've, I've only got, you've only got the first page. There's, this is the page of all, all of the ninety, ninety-nine counties, but all of the counties, every, even the small counties have felt the pinch on this. What I'm asking you is if you could work together with your friends, with your fellow supervisors, and try to reinstate the SNAP program for the poor, and to, if we can't reinstate it, to establish a, a program with some of the surplus that we have in our, in our society, uh, in our county, in our state, for the, for the poor. So this is what I'm asking you, approaching you today, because I, I think you have an important role to play. Uh, you know, us faith people can talk about the poor, but you actually deal with the poor every day. By everything you do, it affects them, and this important role, this, the leading of, of, uh, a hundred and forty-one million dollars, and that's just from April to March, uh, from April to August, is still going on, is still going on today, this loss, and it's, we're, our poor people are losing it, our, our economy is, is suffering from it. And this is a program that was a federal program, it's not costing the state a penny. Uh, this is money that goes directly, uh, from the state, from the federal government to the poor. And, uh, I urge you to work with our friends in Des Moines, uh, who also have that same responsibility to look for the poor, and encourage them and try to reinstate this program of, of direct benefits to the poor. Um, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone online? Hearing none, we'll move on to claims and payments. Mr. Beeter?
Total for claims and payments this week is four hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, twenty-four cents. Uh, the larger payments, um, under the sheriff, there was thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars for training at the, uh, Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, appears to be for two individuals, uh, in conservation, um, a brush chipper for fifty-four thousand, three hundred dollars. And in the engineer's office, fifty thousand, fifty-seven dollars for Mile Rock, and county assessor, um, for insurance, fourteen thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Everything appears to be in order.
Thank you, Grant.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion, any questions? Hearing none, this is the resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Layla?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is received project updates from department heads and elected official. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Kathy Nicholas County Engineer. Uh, all roads and bridges are in good operating condition today. I just wanted to make a few other comments. As of about two weeks ago, we are fully staffed in my department. Uh, in December of twenty twenty, I had a retirement, an account specialist retired, and, and since that time, we've been in need of one position or another. And this does include the secondary roads department, as well as my staff in the engineer's office. I'm, but, I'm worried about how long this is going to last. It's getting harder and harder to attract, um, truck drivers that have CDLs, uh, commercial driver's licenses. We used to get about fifty to sixty applicants for every, uh, equipment operator position that requiring a CDL, uh, when there was an opening. That was, that was a while ago, that was fourteen years ago. Very recently, we've only been getting about ten applicants that we can even interview. We continue to get our most critical work done, such as plowing snow, stop signs replaced, and debris removed off of our roadways, let me assure you of that. In the office, we have several older technicians that are, that are thinking about retiring, they're getting close to retirement age. Within the next one or two years, I know we'll be looking for at least one or two technicians. Those jobs are just about as critical as the snow plowing. They are our eyes and ears out on our job sites. We want to know what our contractors are doing, what we're paying for, that what we're getting is what we're paying for out on our job sites. It's especially important with our federal aid projects. Um, if we don't have proper supervision on our federal aid projects, because we are now going back to federal aid projects, we may lose federal funding. Um, just two years ago, we did wait, raise the wage of the technicians here in our, uh, Teamsters Union, uh, but we are going to be facing some tough challenges, looking for recruiting technicians at those current wages here in Black Hawk County. These last eighteen months, there's been quite a bit of turnover in my office. We are not as productive when we are not fully staffed. We have spent a lot of time in the last year, year and a half, um, posting for new employees, interviewing new employees, candidates, I should say, making job offers, and then, of course, we are less productive once they get here. Just, it does take several months for that person to get fully, you know, acclimated into their job. We will continue to get our essential services done. Um, let me be clear on that. We prioritize our work here in the office and out in secondary roads to get done what the public expects and what they rely on. And what we don't get done is longer-term initiatives, such as planning, and how to be more effective and, and more efficient, those types of activities. Um, we do delay work that is not as critical, such as mapping, um, brush cutting, for example, in some locations. We need to continue to attract and invest in our employees. Um, a market wage study is needed to determine how our wages fit in with the surrounding communities, and we need to be competitive to attract new employees and retain the excellent employees that we already have. I want to voice my support for the funding of the wage study. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Any other department heads or elected officials in here, online? Yolando?
Yolando Lovren, Black Hawk County Veterans Affairs right there. And I just, uh, want to take two time, take two minutes out of the day that we already talked about reflecting on, um, our actions. But on October twenty-third, uh, we lost two hundred and forty-one Marines in Beirut, in Beirut, and, uh, and so we lost Marines, sailors, and, um, some, a couple guys in the Army. And, uh, just, uh, want to take a few minutes to reflect on that. And here's, and two, uh, another thing that I sent out to you guys, and that is Operation Bring Life to Veterans, and that standpoint in association with the Iowa State Association of Counties, the National Association with the County Patrol Officers, and also the Iowa State Association of Counties, ISAT. Uh, they have a program that we just were aware of, started, I just got aware of it last week, but it's a great program, uh, for veterans, and that is to bring awareness, uh, during the month of November, in particular leading up to Veterans Day, of the sacrifices that our families have made. And I'd just like to share a couple of things. It says, "Since the tragedy of September eleventh, two thousand and five, our nation's voluntary military force members and their families have made immense sacrifice for our safety and security over a two-decking period. Similar to sacrifices of previous generations of our armed forces, this service to counties also often results in significant stress to many of our veterans who served in time of war and conflict. I want to make sure our veterans and their families know that their service matters, that we are grateful for their sacrifice, and that it is now our turn to make sure that they are served by our county government and our community. In addition to the lighting county buildings, residents and businesses are encouraged to participate by simply changing one light bulb in their house to green. This can be an interior light that neighbors and pass byers see, and an interior light that sparks a conversation about green." And it's bringing awareness. One of the things that our office is trying to do to kind of support this program, and I'm looking for support from the board of supervisors in this standpoint, uh, we quarter seventy-five green light bulbs, the Amazon, who is a partner, uh, in this program, and, uh, what we're gonna do is issue lots of seventy-five green light bulbs to veterans, so that they can help promote during that period, uh, that we're covering. It pretty much runs from November the sixth through the thirteenth or so like that, to Veterans Day. And, uh, and so we're looking to do that, we're looking to see if we can get the support of the board of supervisors to support that. Me being a veteran, um, I like the ideal of us showing some, like, support in that standpoint. I know that we do a great job throughout the year, during this particular year, but, um, they just kind of want us to come together, and it brings harmony within a veteran community. Right now, there's such a disparity with the vibe, whether it's political, uh, economical, and this is opportunity for us all coming together, and remember who we are, and the progress that we have established. We're talking to a, a veteran who, between him and his wife, served fifty-two years, so I'm, I'm all about healing, about healing our county, healing our community, healing our nation, and remember for giving all the sacrifices that so many have worked for, for War One, War Two, Three, of, in, uh, in the current conflict that we're in today, in that standpoint. So, uh, if you guys have that, I just would like your support on that, and, uh, community, our community, we're willing to do that. Also, uh, coming up, we have our, uh, Operation Business that we're gonna start where we look for sponsorship for veterans, uh, during the holidays, so that they can get gifts that they can't afford, we're already starting that. And then this Thursday, we're doing our Operation Winter Shield, where we're giving out the winter, um, gear for our veterans who can't afford us to drop, to provide a few meals, in that standpoint. So, and then, I'd like to say thank you to Great Meadows and UNWAGA, and the holidays have started, they've already started food drives to support our food pantry. I didn't know we, but, basically get out like forty food bags a month, and so these are two partnerships that are going to allow us to resupply a lot of these, uh, products that we give our veterans. And then, I'm just standing by to just reflect a little.
Thank you, Yolando. I'd, I'd like to see us do the whole month of November in honor of the veteran, not just set, uh, one week. Since November eleventh is right about in the middle, we could do the whole month and honor the veterans the way they should be honored year-round. Anything else? Any other department heads? Hearing none, we'll move on to minutes approved for October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have a hearing coming up for ordinance number seventy-seven dash two seventy-two for a rezone request by Dorothy Hundley. Moving on to a consent agenda by resolution.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none, this is the resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is contracts and agreements, this is a resolution that the lowest responsible bid received from Peterson Contractors, Ryanback, Iowa, letting October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two for Project L-711, reventment at various locations within Black Hawk County with a total bid of a hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars. Engineers estimate was one thou, a hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. Be awarded and directed chair to sign a resolution, authorizing the county engineer to sign the contract and to receive it and place on file contractors bond and certificate of insurance, and recommended by Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Kathy?
Yeah, thi- this project would, uh, would place reventment at four locations around the county to protect the bridges from scour. Uh, as you know, uh, we opened bids last week in the board meeting, there were four bidders. Uh, PCI was the low bid, I would recommend that you award it to them. This contract is very flexible, it has, I believe, the, it has no working days, the work has to be complete by the end of, uh, next, by the end of this fiscal year. And there are very little minor impacts to traffic, that's why we haven't put any working, a working day requirement on this, so I would ask for your approval.
Uh, nine percent over budget, right?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is other businesses, resolution that the suspension requested by Cassandra Little on taxes owed for twenty-two, twenty-three, in somits in the amount of five hundred and ninety-two dollars. Be approved in pursuant to four twenty-seven point eight of the Code of Iowa, and the county treasurer be authorized and directed to adjust her records accordingly.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on this item? Hearing none, this is the resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Chelka?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Little?
It's Jane.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a nine oh five hearing on the proposed ordinance number seventy-seven dash two seventy-two, the Hundley rezone. Motion to receive and place on file proof of publication of notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second.
I'll make a motion, the way the first reading as notice was published on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I gotta finish, we gotta get the, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I will make a motion, the way the first reading as notice was published on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two in the Waterloo Courier, in accordance with the requirements of Code of Iowa, and publication was approved on the request submitted by Dorothy Hundley at seven eight eight zero West Twenty-seventh Street. To rezon one point five acres from A agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district to split off a two thousand and five home that was built on thirty-five acres after the fifteen-year waiting period.
Moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, the motion to close the hearing after oral written comments are received and placed on file. Any written comments? Seth, you're up.
All right, yeah, we have a request to rezon one point five acres from A agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to split off a two thousand and five home that was built on thirty-five acres, and after the fifteen-year waiting period is expired, to request to rezon or plat for the property. It was moved by Bozier and seconded by Brumdet to approve the request by Dorothy Hundley to rezon one point five acres from A agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to split off a two thousand and five home, uh, that was built on thirty-five acres, and after the fifteen-year waiting period is expired, to request to rezon or plat the property at seven eight eight zero West Twenty-seventh Street. The request was unanimously approved. One point five acres in question is located at seven eight eight zero West Twenty-seventh Street, which is approximately five hundred feet east of the West Twenty-seventh Street and Hurst Road intersection. Uh, the surrounding, uh, area consists of agricultural lands, rural homes, and the city of, uh, Cedar Falls. Uh, land of the north and south is zoned A agricultural district. Land of the east contains land zoned agricultural district, and the city of Cedar Falls, land of the west is zoned agricultural district, and now agricultural lemon, the district. The rezoned area is designated as agricultural in the future land use map, come under the Black Hawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Land of the north, south, and west is, uh, designated as agricultural. Land to the east is designated as agricultural in the city of Cedar Falls. Uh, none of the land to be rezoned, um, is in a special flood hazard area. Um, the, uh, the site had a land evaluation score of ninety-five and score of two fifty-five. Uh, the applicant wishes to rezon one point five acres from A to AR in order to split off a home built on thirty-five acres after the fifteen-year waiting period, the request to rezon has expired. Uh, the property in parcel is a lease a score of two, uh, fifty-five, which is considered a high agricultural value site. The zoning warrant notes that land is, uh, classified as having high agricultural value The zoning ordinance notes that land is classified as having high agricultural value, should be strongly discouraged for development in almost every case. Also states in the general, these sites reserve agricultural activities and protect them from urban development or even urban use encroachment. However, the ordinance also states that under very unique circumstances are these sites to be developed only after very compelling evidence is provided. So in words, does list several criteria that could be considered unique and compelling evidence, there is follows, there has not been an active crop production or conservation reserve program for the previous 15 years. Area is not conducive to production by reason of partial shape or size. Areas compatible surrounding uses by reason of similar adjacent uses. Meeting any one of these criteria should not constitute approval, however, each request will be reviewed and evaluated based on its individual circumstances. Should be noted that the home is existing and no additional land will be taken out of farm production. The home was constructed in 2005 and 35 acres. Section 2 special exemptions does not allow, does a home to build on, on the farmhouse on 15 acres without it, you know, can't be rezoned or subdivided for a period of 15 years. This zoning ordinance was passed by the Board of Adjustment October 4th, 2011. The provision was designed to help preserve agricultural ground by preventing homes built on 35 acres requested to be subdivided or rezoned. Similar request for rezon, 8521 Campbell Avenue was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission on June 19th, 2018, and was approved by the Board of Supervisors in July 17th, 2018. In addition, similar request for rezon at 7676 Wagner Rose recommend for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission on June 21st, 2022, and was approved by the Board of Supervisors in August 2nd, 2022. Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved the request at the regular meeting on September 20th, 2022. The proposed rezon area is not located within the Blackhawk County Waterloo Airport land use residential district. The technical review committee did not have any issues regarding this request.
Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor, aye?
I think we need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
With that motion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, the resolution to suspend rules requiring the board supervisors considering vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on this item? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, ordinance adoption, that the ordinance amending, ordinance number 36 is amended, the Blackhawk County Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February 2nd, 1999 by adding subsection number 272 to section 6B. Rezoning certain property as described in the above requests amended by Dorothy Hundley and to consider the same for adoption if adopted would be known at ordinance number 77-272.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is discussion, possible board action, disposition of recurring expenses currently paid from the jail's 6040 room and board fund.
And I see we received documentation from Billy in regard to these expenses. This is the one thing I wanted to see, I mean, my fear with the laws that currently stands is it could change. Laws change, what if it changes and indicates we can no longer collect fees from inmates? And then every expense we see here becomes a tax. I'm glad we're getting this in this form, I think we should have this on every board meeting or every other one whenever it's required, because I just want to be able to look at it. I think this is our job. The one concern I have is the coffee in the water, but there could be explanations. I see Nate is here. It makes me uneasy utilizing this funding to buy, you know, the question I have is the coffee for the inmates?
No, sorry. Nate Neff, jail administrator, some of those expenses you'll see, we host a lot of trainings from out of county kinds of things, with the range where it is, there's no other facilities available. So we do generally provide that just as a time-saving measure, so people on their breaks don't have to try and run into Raymond or to Elk Run or anything like that. Again, that's all part of, absorbed by the $500 that we charge each agency that uses it annually, and when we host larger events out there, they bring in money for those things, so.
Because I know, I asked Supervisor White last week, I said, who pays for our water here? And he said he does. He buys it. So, you know, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, just I don't want to be, I don't want to be utilizing this money to buy water. Now, what's interesting, if that coffee was going to the inmates, I'd say I'm fine with it, because they're paying for it. But I, the way I feel, there should be other ways to purchase these items. Of course courthouse security is, it's something we're needed, that's needed. The water softener, salt, that's needed to maintain the facility. We need to provide electricity. Again, one fear I have is what if the slot changes and we can no longer collect these fees? These are some significant expenses, we're going to have to figure out how to pay for them, or we're going to have to go without.
Yeah, just, yeah, one thing on that, Dan, I know that's kind of where, if safety changes, and we will lose out on that. But as it is, when our budget was set back in January, February, and we've ratified it, we kind of go ahead and like every department head and elected official, we make our plan for where we're going to pay for those things out of. And so that's where we've always done it, and it's, absolutely anticipated keeping on doing that. With that change, let's see, I guess, so that's going to be a question for us going forward, is that something, since we didn't get a work session on this, is this something you're going to want these bills monthly, or can we just assume to send them over? Does it need to be an agenda item each month?
It's up to the board, I mean, I like seeing them on a regular basis. I think at this point in time, I myself would like to see a monthly on the agenda, because it adds that transparency.
Feelings of, feelings of the other supervisors, Tom?
Well, the question I have, you mentioned the various agencies bringing in revenue when they own the training session. Where does that money go then?
Captain Bozier could probably speak better to that on the training, I don't know if that, if we have a line item that that goes into, or Billy? Yep. Billy's shaking her head firmly back here that yes.
We charged.
Is that a line item that that goes into, is that part of our training budget?
I don't, I don't actually have the account number with me right now, but it's not in the 6040. It's a separate one that I send reports for monthly to Jody and to the sheriff. I could send that out later, I just don't have that.
Tom, can you hear her?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, and then my other question is, are we still collecting them from the jail fees?
For certain things we're still going for the jail for, like other counties, for department, correct?
No, are we, are we doing the collecting yet, like we have in the past?
Uh, no, as far as I understand, that was to be taken over by the board when they took over the control of the 40.
Yeah, because we didn't specify a date, so it was effective immediately, as of that meeting.
Best to my knowledge, it was, yes. So, well, we're still sending the confession of judgments out with the inmates, so then they're supposed to set up payment plans with, we keep those on file. So whenever you determine who or how is going to do the collecting on it, and that information's all there, we're obviously ready and willing to work with you guys to help.
Wait a minute, the sheriff's office can't have their cake and eat it too, I mean, we were just told that the budget was established. And as the budget was established, the sheriff's office was collecting fees. That doesn't change until July 1st, 2023. Because my position is if the sheriff's office doesn't want to collect this fee, then the sheriff's office is going to have to figure out, that that's going to come from their budget.
Okay, well, again, from what we talked about last week, this is where we really wanted a work session to work through this stuff, to understand how it was going to work, because we weren't aware of how it was set to work.
Because that's been the question, I think, is like for staff, it was difficult to decide how they were supposed to be coding things, or how it was going to be paid, or what was going to be paid, since there was that change, correct?
Exactly.
And everybody's kind of waiting to work through that.
Yes.
So we could have a work session, if that's something, I guess, that.
The question is, if we're not collecting fees at this time, then we need to stop paying invoices.
Correct.
Money coming in, we can't have money going out.
Well, we do use some of those funding, like for the security for this building, and those types of things in our staff.
That's essential, but the invoices that Dan's talking about today aren't the security of the courthouse. So like I said, I mean, it's just common sense, if we're not collecting money, you can't pay invoices.
So there's discretionary things you'd like to consider, and that's kind of what you're looking at here, is what I'm assuming, we'd all be looking at this on a monthly or whatever, because we can look at these anytime we want, but.
Well, it sounds like we're going to have to look at it every week.
You're not going to pay the courthouse security if you collected any fees, there ain't going to be any money.
Correct.
That's correct.
And again, this is.
That comes from, then, the supervisors, I guess, have to make that determination where it comes from.
Like I said, the budget was established for this year already. And in the establishment of that budget was for the sheriff's office to collect fees until June 30th.
Yes, and again, as part of that, we had the 40% that would pay these things out of as well. When the board took over, I think you guys said you were going to take over collections as well. So we were under the impression that that went into effect immediately.
Well, the resolution said we'd provide funding for it. So, but again, the budget's been established as to how it was set up. We're getting the oversight that's entrusted upon us right now. This is what we should have been doing for the past 15 years or whatever.
Which, to be fair, we've always sent all the bills over.
Yeah.
Because if the sheriff's office doesn't want to collect this, when we establish the sheriff's office budget for next year, we'll simply deduct that amount from their budget. It's that simple. So positions are lost, positions are lost.
The bottom line is really, we're all county. And it, the money is not going for, for good things, it's going for the essentials. So regardless who collects it, it's still all going in towards paying bills for the county. Because if not, then the taxpayers are paying for it. So I think I'd rather see the sheriff's office continue to collecting until the, the board of supervisors establish whether they were going to set up another collector, or what we were going to do. But again, it's all going to the same pot, it's county money, paying for services in the sheriff's department, the courthouse security and so forth. So I think we all got to keep that in mind, it's all going for what costs.
I completely agree with you there, Tom, I mean, we need to work together and need to be on the same team on this.
I mean, there's nothing wrong with the board scrutinizing the invoices, we probably should have been seeing them all along. And I think that's where Supervisor Trump is coming from. But to hear that it's not being collected now, guess what? When the money runs out, some things aren't going to get paid, and some of the essentials aren't going to get paid, and it's going to come from tax dollars.
So I guess, but, kind of going back a month here, if we could sit down and have that work session and work through these things, figure that out, that we're fully on board with that, I would love to do that. Sit down where we can actually talk it over and work it out, and figure out what's going on and where we're going with it.
Because even if, even if we hire a person on our side to collect, the money's still going to go towards, like, to the jail, courthouse security. I mean, it's not like we're going to spend the money on renovating the supervisor's office or the courtroom. And that's, that's what I'm trying to say, is we need to work together on this, because it's all going to one area. I mean, we're not going to spend it, but we're also going to kind of watch invoices and so forth. That's not saying anything was being done wrong either. I guess it kind of disappoints me that the collections haven't been going on, because the money's going to come from taxes, I suppose that, and that may mean budgets, smaller budgets, very simple. But a work session, what's that going to do? We already had a lot of talk about this. The board's made a decision, I think we need to move on now, but we need to continue with the collection, and if the sheriff's office is going to collect it, I guess we need to initiate hiring an individual, setting it up similar to what county attorney's office is doing. The only question I have is, that person that we hire would be funded through that 6040 fund. Was the person that was doing it in the jail, were they being funded by the 6040, or were they being paid by general fund tax dollars?
Now, again, I mean, part of it was done, our booking clerks did part of the collecting, is one portion of their bills, and then the jail secretary does, did part of it as part of her duties too, so they're going through general fund.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Well, if they're not engaging in these duties, we can save money right there.
Well, again, that's not like it was their sole duties, it was.
One, but we can figure out how much time they've applied toward these. I think what the sheriff's office needs to realize is by not collecting these fees, they're just hurting their own budget.
Again, I guess, when you guys made the ruling a couple, three weeks ago, that you were taking over collections, we kind of took that as though it took effect immediately.
Because the money didn't disappear, it didn't evaporate.
No.
This, the analogy I use is, we do need to all try to work together, but the attitude seems to be, if we're not going to use my ball, I'm going to go home, I'm going to take my ball and go home.
Well, the analogy I'll use, this has been one whole big pissing contest, honestly, between the board of supervisors and the sheriff's office, and I understand why there's, you know, resistance to, you know, reasonable requests to have a work session to work this all out. It was said when the majority passed this, that the board was taking over collections, so I don't know why this is coming as a surprise, and so I'm not sure why there's resistance to having a work session with our employees to do to him.
No, no, I was just, the chair starts working with the HR director and hire an individual to do the collection similar to downstairs, county attorney's office, and the salary be paid through the 6040 funds.
Well, Tom, we don't have any information to determine yet at this point, like, what that means for a staff, for staffing.
Did you just say his words already approved that?
You have to talk up.
No, we didn't say that. We said we were going to take it over, we didn't make any determination on how, or who, or when, or how much, or, or even.
You want that, you want that agenda item next week?
On how we're going to do it? I get, I.
Well, on hiring an individual, that way you left the place so unvoted.
Well, I guess we'll need to see how much time and effort and what that takes, I guess, or if it could be done internally, couldn't it? Somebody's got to make that, I don't know that you can do that in a week.
Bottom line is, we're not collecting now, and bills are trying to be paid.
That's true.
So what's the person doing that should be doing it now with that time?
Again, that's one part of what the booking clerks did, and it's one part of what the jail secretary did. She's still got plenty of other duties to do.
But she's, she should still have the time to do those bills.
There were things that she worked in as she had time to do it, yeah.
So, we don't want to, we don't want a work session. I mean, it seems like it's what will help the staff more than anybody, if there is a difference of opinion on elected officials, that the staff is searching for information. When we got the email earlier this week, it was because staff is needing to know how to code things and where to send things, and, and what, what they are going to be doing, or what we are going to be paying for it, or whatever, I guess, and.
After sitting here and listening earlier to a gentleman speak on the poor, we've got a lot of poor people in this community, and yet we want to add an employee when we've already got a person in place that could get that job done. And yet we're arguing about it, or pissing match is what it is, back and forth. And too much stuff went on years ago that we should have caught, shame on us, that went on at the sheriff's office, that they done out at that range, that he went before those people out in Raymond and promised them exactly what was going to happen, and yet he's went way beyond what was going to be done.
Well, it'd probably be a difference of opinion if you were here to speak to that today, but yeah, I know what you're saying, there's.
I don't care, yeah, well.
Well, I just mean.
That works both ways, I got a letter from him I could turn in, that he wasn't very kind about, he hasn't been upfront with people lately, and he needs to be upfront with people. When you go out to Raymond, when you hear those rounds go off, I'm unsettled hearing them, because you're not used to hearing stuff like that on a regular basis. When you go out to Raymond, when you hear those rounds go off, I'm unsettled hearing them, because you're not used to hearing stuff like that on a regular basis, and those poor kids in the school got it here every day.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
And that was brought up years ago, that there was only gonna be certain days that that was gonna happen, then all of a sudden, well, we got a hell of a nice range here, we can rent it out for five hundred dollars, and we got everybody and their dog out there except the public that can't go in there. And had one gentleman that lives out there walk on the property, and Tony told him to get the hell out there, because that's private property.
Well, maybe we need a work session on some of that.
I agree.
A work session would be a bad idea, because quite frankly, I'd like to see more of this money go toward programs-
So would I.
For the inmates.
Okay, who's gonna determine that, I guess, what we discuss with that?
I think we need a co-
Because it sounds like we've got kind of a cross-section of things to clarify.
Billy, you have any ideas?
I don't.
What?
No, I just wanna clarify.
Okay, thank you.
No, that's not my decision to make.
No, I just-
No.
So, I just wanna clarify that when the board listing is sent on Fridays, it includes all those invoices. So when you approve the claims for today, that included those items that were sent in that email, so just so you know, so if you wanna do that different, you'll have to let our office know, because at the point that you have it on the board listing, it's already ready to be processed. It doesn't mean that you can't look at that listing and take things off, but we would need to know, know probably at that point before you approve that resolution.
Because we've already had the services performed.
Yes.
Up to that point, so we're already meeting the vendors.
By the time they get to our office, they are invoices, they are for services that have already been, um, provided to us, so I just wanted to clarify that. So when you approved, um, the expenditures, it did include those items that were in that email that I had sent, I believe, last week, I can't remember.
Sounds to me like we need the work session to determine going forward, not so much at what we've already expensed, or, you know, had services in expense, maybe, no, that might be something we're not happy with, but it's to say, okay, for the next rest of the year, I guess the remaining of the year, where are those dollars gonna come from? Or are we gonna have those services, or purchases, or coffee, or whatever, those kinds of things?
You know, and I, I'm in favor of a work session, you know, I always had mixed emotions on these fees. You know, we've got people in the community that aren't able to eat, our inmates are generally from the slower social economic range of our community.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, these fees have always made me uncomfortable, but I think they're necessary, because it is part of our criminal justice system.
I mean, to echo part of that, I mean, that's, um, I mean, I'm in favor of state law change, the, the limited, the collection of these types of fees, just because we're, um, but that's not the situation that we're in, but, but, but people absolutely, um, are going back into society, and then they've just got, this is just another layer, uh, that's old from now, I believe. And so, um, as long as these fees do exist and are to be collected, um, I do wanna see them utilized to the best of their benefits, but on, on a moral purpose, um, I really wish that, that we were just oriented more at, um, preparing people to be back, back in society once they've served their time, rather than having to strap with more debt to, to figure out.
Now, now, we have a full agenda next week, because we're, we're having a work session on ARPA funding. I think November eighth would be a good day for a work session on this matter.
Sure, because there's a lot of information to-
Could I speak?
It's not a public, uh, we, there's no, it's not provided for public input on this agenda item.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just saying something maybe you should add to that public work session meeting, other things that... It's painful hearing you talk about, you know, you, you, you're short of money here and there, but there've been some decisions in the past that have led to this, you know, and it's part of, maybe, just briefly, it's part of your public work session meeting, maybe you ought to go back and, um, revisit an earlier decision of suspending property tax payments that, on city properties that are owned by the city, after the city took them, and those circumstances surrounding that, because the city might fleece city residents, but you shouldn't allow, county shouldn't allow the city to, um, fleece the county out of their much-needed dollars.
James, we're getting off, yeah, thank you. So, we're gonna move on with the work session for, does November eighth look good for everyone?
Yes.
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 Does that help you, I know, Billy, you had some questions, I think, for the board, does that work session work for planning for you and staff for the next couple of weeks then, of how to handle things?
That would be great, we're just looking for some direction.
Okay.
So, that'll, that'll work fine with me, I'll come in that day for the work session, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to, moving on to discussion, the purchase of fiscal year twenty-three capital items within the county engineer's office.
Good morning, board, I wanted to share with you some of the effects of the supply chain issues on our large equipment purchases in the past few years, and how that is affecting our current budget and future budgets. So I put together some slides for the work session this morning, um, I think you should all have the slides, I emailed them to you last evening. If you would like a larger copy, I can get that to you later in the day. So just to generalize, some of our larger equipments, such as our single and tandem axle dump trucks, they're taking a very long time to, once they are purchased, to receive them, it's taking us eighteen months approximately to get these large pieces of equipment from, after we have ordered them. Um, our light duty pickup trucks are, we're seeing the same thing, that there's really long lead time to actually get the vehicle once it's been under contract, and that is if you are even able to order the vehicle. Uh, so as a consequences of this situation is, you know, we're unable to forecast when we will receive the vehicles, particularly in which fiscal year we will receive and pay for the vehicles. It seems like we're, we're ordering the vehicles in one fiscal year, but then we're purchasing, paying for them once they're received, and that's the next fiscal year, and we-
Isn't it the same for everybody across the?
Yes, I'm not saying we're in any different situation than anyone else, we need to know how to budget for FY twenty-four, FY twenty-five, we just need some direction, us and probably many other departments, on how we're gonna budget for these types of situations. Like I said, we could budget it consecutively in two years, and would be one solution. Uh, it also makes it very difficult to make any changes in those capital items that we've requested for that current fiscal year. For example, we're in fiscal year twenty-three, I'm coming to you today because we do wanna make a change in the pickup truck that we budgeted in this year's budget for, um, our roadside biologist. Um, it just makes it difficult to know how much money you have to work with. And another thing I wanted to mention was that last February, the finance director at that time did give us some, some money for a light duty pickup truck and a single axle dump truck. This was put into budget line three fifty-one, and that was to come out of tax monies. So that has a direct impact on what I'm gonna show you, so here are the two dump trucks that we purchased, or asked for, got approval to buy in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. So these were under contract in last June, June of twenty twenty-one, you gave us permission, permission to buy those. Uh, two, the two motor graders in FY twenty-three, we have paid for those, I'm sorry, those are indebted, we haven't paid for those. They're still at the manufacturers, we haven't paid for those, but we're, we think that those will be to us before the end of the calendar year. We have purchased a disc mower, and we have purchased two, two twenty-five ton floor jacks. So out of our FY twenty-three money, this is the, the two items that we have actually bought, we've received them and paid for them. In this budget, we also have a tandem axle dump truck, and then a light duty pickup truck. And again, these, we were, money was placed in county's fund three fifty-one, this should be a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and thirty-four thousand dollars to pay for a single axle dump truck and a light duty pickup truck. Uh, about a year ago, when we were putting together our budget for FY twenty-three, we, we knew that we were going to be getting a roadside biologist, if you approved that, we wanted this individual to have a pickup truck. At that time, we thought the individual, we would just purchase a half-ton light duty pickup truck, something to get this individual around the county with. That person is now with us, Griffin, he's gonna be speaking to you next week, I think, with, uh, the week commissioners update, he's gonna tell you more about his program, but he's, since he's been here in the last month, he's determined that it would be more beneficial to buy a one-ton pickup truck. That would be more efficient for him, we won't spend money on a half-ton pickup truck that wouldn't be used by him, he would rather have the one-ton pickup truck that can carry five hundred gallons of water, he would use that just about every day in the summer months to, to apply herbicides to our roadside. So we would like to change, for our FY twenty-three budget, switch to a larger pickup truck, a one-ton pickup truck, so that he can be more productive next summer, if, if it's received by then. So, just looking at the current truck options, talking to the, the big three auto manufacturers, Chevy, Dodge, and Ford, Chevy is no longer, they're not taking any orders for twenty twenty-three, and we're hearing that, we're being told that it is uncertain if they will take orders in the near future on twenty twenty fours. There will be a long wait time, and, like you know, there are high prices. The Ford option for a one-ton truck, that, that opens October twenty-seventh at midnight, we've been talking with, um, Don's Truck Sales in Fairbank. They can most likely be on, be online October twenty-eighth, looking at the, the window to see, giving us a quote for this pickup truck. They, they think the cost will be approximately ninety to ninety-two thousand dollars for a one-ton pickup truck with this pickup, this lift-out bed, such as you see here in the photo.
So he can't do the, what can't he do with a half-a-ton truck that he can do with a, you know, my dad used to say, sometimes you gotta work with what you got. And with, another time, we just heard about the poor in this community, and we wanna spend three times what we were gonna spend on a truck, I can't, I can't justify it, I cannot justify it.
So just to continue on, Dodge is selling retail right now, no, no fleet sales from Dodge, they did give us a quote for eighty-nine thousand dollars for a one-ton truck, quad cab with a dump box. We would also say that, I don't, we, you cannot purchase a, a half-ton pickup truck for thirty-four thousand dollars, that, that budget estimate is no longer current, it's probably closer to fifty thousand dollars for a, a half-ton pickup truck, so, e- either way, if we are purchasing some type of pickup truck in this year's budget, we don't have enough money.
So he doesn't have a truck that he can use, what's he using right now?
So right now, he's using just, is that a one-ton, or, excuse me, a half-ton, or, right now, he's simply going out, he's not doing the duties that we would like him to do next summer with this larger vehicle, he's not doing the duties that, one of his primary duties that we wanted to retain the roadside biologist for. With a larger truck, he would have a five-hundred gallon water tank, and he would have a one-hundred-and-twenty gallon mixing tank on this truck that would allow him and another person to be applying, uh, herbicides to the roadside, to take care of the vegetation in our county ditches. So, uh, this slide does show that in FY twenty-three, we did budget over one million dollars for equipment. And if we do, the, the slide also shows that we would, we would be about fifty-six thousand dollars short of the pickup truck price, because we had budgeted thirty-four thousand dollars. So, um, our dilemma, of course, is two things, how do we budget for any types of vehicles, knowing we're in these supply chain issues for FY twenty-four, we're starting to work on our budgets now, we're wondering how, what would be the direction from the board, and I realize the new finance director will, will probably give us some direction as well. Should we budget two years in a row for the same piece of equipment? And then, the more immediate question is, how do we, if you allow us to buy a larger pickup truck, we can do an amendment in the spring to transfer from our secondary road fund, we do have a healthy, uh, secondary road fund balance of about four million dollars, so we, we do have the funds of the extra fifty-five thousand dollars to pay for the larger truck.
And I don't think you mentioned, but what you're trying to do, I guess, is rather than buy two vehicles, you're just upgrading to buy the one that does the job of both.
Correct. Right, we, we just wanna purchase the one vehicle and hopefully get it within twelve to eighteen months, so that, um, the roadside biologist can start spraying.
What about the guy that was gonna get the other truck, what's he gonna do? You were gonna buy two trucks, now we're only gonna buy one, and yet it's three times the amount of money it was, and now only one guy gets a truck, and what's the other guy get?
So we were, we are still slated to buy two tandem axle dump trucks, that, our larger trucks are, such as our single axle dump trucks and our tandem axle dump trucks, we don't wanna make any change just to those today, I just want you to know that we are ordering those in one fiscal year, we are not receiving them until the next fiscal year, so we're not paying for them until the next fiscal year. And so that's becoming a question of how we, we should budget for that.
I talked to Kathy lengthy on this yesterday, and it was a good discussion, um, I understood what she was trying to do, um, my concerns that I mentioned Kathy yesterday is, the vehicle situation isn't just unique to Blackwell County, it's private citizens and everybody, and there's nobody on this board that's gonna pay retail or above invoice price for a new vehicle. So I guess the question is, why would we expect the taxpayers to do the same? Now, Kathy talked about earlier about supporting that classification, seventy thousand dollars there it's gonna cost us, and then if you actually do the reclassification, it's gonna cost more, the board allowed her to increase one full position this year that she talked about, and now, we were never told at the time, but now it's gonna take the hundred thousand dollar vehicle for this individual. And then her other question is, how, how are they supposed to budget in the future? Well, we're not gonna pay for vehicles that are above invoice, that's ridiculous, you wouldn't do that with your own personal finances, so why would you expect to use tax dollars to do that? So my suggestion is, we've got a couple of ways we could go, we can either delay our purchasing, because as I stated yesterday, we have updated our fleets in all departments, that it is not an emergency situation if we go one year, two year without buying a new pickup. Because prior to, about fifteen years ago, we were, had an old aging fleet, and we spent millions and millions of dollars on new vehicles. So, the bottom line is, she's got one vehicle that the board approved for thirty-five thousand dollars, and now she wants to go to ninety-three, I can't support that, that, that's too much of a cost to the taxpayers, and the bottom line is, when she says they're gonna cost fifty thousand now, well, guess what, we don't buy it at fifty thousand, because we can't afford it. Because I guarantee you, there's a person in that room that's gonna pay above invoice for a vehicle. So, I, I'm sorry, I understand where she's coming from, but I don't see this as an emergency. You talked about, he's gonna use this to spray the, whatever, in the summertime, well, we're not in the summer, we're in November, and I would suggest that you either try to get a light duty pickup for what you're budgeting for, if you can't, then we try again next fiscal year. And that's how you should do it, because like I said, we just can't keep paying these big prices, uh, right now, you're paying thirty, forty percent more for steel, you know, and if it's not an emergency, then we, we should be waiting, things hopefully will get straightened out, and maybe they won't. But the bottom line is, we gotta be fiscally responsible, and spending this kind of money, and supporting this issue, and spending this money, and then spend some more money, and it's, it's gotta stop, really. and then spend some more money and it's, it's got to stop really.
Linda?
No, I was just going to say, I don't think anybody's like supporting, I mean, the issue is what it is. I think people are looking for solutions. It's kind of like, how do we do this or here's the problem and this is a problem for us as a county, whether it's the budget cycle, that's going to be one we can look at too, or it's addressing the needs of the county. So it's making us aware of...
Kind of like, kind of like your own budget. If you don't got the money, you don't buy it. You know, you put it off until you can afford it.
We are seeing, trucks are selling, businesses are buying trucks. I mean, it's costing, it will cost us money in the long run if we do not keep our fleet up. The large vehicles, we spend a million dollars, close to a million dollars on motor graders and trucks every year. That's never going to end. Our motor graders last about 10,000 hours. We have 10 or 11 motor graders. We need to buy a motor grader every year. We need to stay in continual rotation of our trucks and our motor graders. So that's not going to change. The light duty pickups, they're all, I don't know how much they will come down and the fact that they are taking so long to get is our other, is our other issue.
But you know, Kathy, when we started updating, when you first got here, started updating our fleet, we were updating 20-year-old vehicles. I'm not talking about late 20 years now. I'm just saying, let's just stop, wait. Nobody can get vehicles right now. It's in the private sector and also in the public sector. You just can't get them now and you just can't keep throwing money at these problems to fix them. I think we're in probably better shape than a lot of counties because we spent, we invested so much money in our equipment. And the equipment that we replaced years ago, I don't care if they were dump trucks, pickups, graders, whatever. They were old and had a lot of miles. You know, something we were still using them. And since then, we spent millions of dollars. So my, I can't support this today. My solution is we just stop and wait and see what the market's going to do and live with what we got. And it's not going to make our fleet old.
So if this vehicle isn't approved to the resolution that you were asking today, then were you planning to go ahead with a half-ton pickup and make do kind of a thing for the... I'm just curious. I'm not meaning to put you on the spot, but was that a consideration or what do you do, I guess?
I guess we're not sure at this point. We will regroup and probably come back next week with another option, if that's what.
Linda, you saw the email from conservation. They can't find a small pickup. In every county, they can't find one anywhere. So I guess the answer to the question, what you just said, she's got 35 budgets, she can't find a pickup. They're not selling. They want $50,000.
Yeah. So they need an alternative for this gentleman though to be working. It's like, so what do we do?
He's working right now, isn't he?
I thought about this. We hired somebody because the situation was the same last year, only it was actually worse and I'm getting vehicles.
I would say we weren't seeing the full effect of the supply chain like we are today. And yes, we probably, I should have done more homework and checked to see that that this one-ton truck would be more desirable for this position. So I do take that responsibility. But since that time, we've decided that a one-ton truck would be more advantageous than buying a separate truck.
Sure. And that helps to have the experienced person be on board to just make that. So don't, yeah, take it all on you.
We haven't seen anything yet with vehicles. I mean, this is one, at this point, I can't support it. Maybe in the future. But I've got so many questions and we've got so many different budgets to consider. And this is going to get worse before it gets better.
Unfortunately.
Okay, we'll await some guidance on how to go for an FY '24 budgeting. And we will probably budget very high numbers for light duty pickup trucks.
Yeah, hopefully the finance director, as far as the budget.
My advice would be if your bids are high, I wouldn't even bring them back because, well, you might have a different board, but you're still, there's taxpayer's dollars involved in. It's ridiculous. Like Tom said, we went, you went and do it as a private citizen. I went and do it as a private citizen. The young man right there went and do it as a private citizen. So why are we going to do it with taxpayer dollars?
So like I said, for, these trucks are selling, these orders are filling out. People, businesses know they, this is the high cost of doing business. I, I guess it is your decision if we go for it.
More people back to work later on. I know people that have been waiting, yeah, two years for a truck and they still don't have it.
Right.
And now they canceled their order because the price of the truck went up so high. You got anything else, Kathy, or is that all of it?
That's pretty much all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is the resolution that the request for a purchase of capital equipment submitted by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer, be approved and directed to chairs of scientific state to approve the purchase of a pickup truck for the roadside biologist from the lowest responsible quote within the amount not to exceed $92,000.
Second?
Any further discussion? This resolution, please answer your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
No.
Bailey?
Yes.
Little?
No.
White?
No, resolution fails. Any reports or information from the board?
I just, I want to thank Pastor Stewie for having the staff benefits today. I don't understand the political motivations of Governor Reynolds and Republican Party of the state that would deny access to a federally funded program. It was about $141 million from the time of April to the end of August that the state of Iowa lost out on because Republicans in the state like to play politics with the lives of the poor.
I'd like to take a break of at least 15 minutes before we go into close session.